I recommend that you wear the shirt on and without.
When have you seen him without a shirt on?
Have you seen my t-shirt?
I think that was caught live.
No, thank you very much. Now, something to kick.
We're on. There are no members of the public, so we'll move straight into the agenda. Apologies for absence. No, it's all here. That's lovely. Declarations of interest. Just John.
Yeah, I'm a trustee of the Arms Houses, so I guess we're.
Oh, yeah, well, so why?
So item six point one one. It's a non-fuelling because I make no money.
Same.
Robin. And my usual one chair.
Okay.
Is that my casualty gets to sit on a planning committee and fucking with the council whenever. I share in the chat even if we're allowed to sit.
Well, we haven't been frivolous yet and spent any money on meeting.
But that could cause problems over most times I will choose not to, as you know. But I may at some point chat like.
Okay, I will declare the interest on item eleven of the planning, which is the Arms Houses repairs to.
Um, I don't know, it's rep but um number thirteen on the planning is on St Rambles Fields and that's I live on that stage again.
If everybody's agreeing, I'm just going to use first names, if that's okay.
Yeah, just watch it.
That's good. Okay, so item three, the minutes of the planning meeting on the sixth of November. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, lovely. Okay, so next is item four. Four point one is to receive a report from the town clerk. And we will see that there's T L slash one two two slash twenty three. Are we happy to receive it? Does anybody have a comment? Absolutely.
Um, just to, just to ask through you, Chair, um, the quarters money in there are not huge. And we are currently working on the, on the. Oh, all right, I was on four point two, I don't remember.
Oh, no, no, I was, I was going to see if there's any comments on that point. And if there isn't, we can go to four point two, our delay to agree and to recommend the budget for twenty twenty four, twenty five to full council. Robin.
Yeah, um, I'll say it once, I'll say again.
Say please.
Um, just to seek assurance that there is enough resources in there to, um, to do what we need to do because we are halfway. Who can make a plan and, and why saying that, I thank the Chair this evening and the, and the Chairman who's, um, watching the meeting for the work they've done on it and where they got us to the consultation. Um, well, I think it's handy officers who work with you. But that's saying, I just want to make sure we've got enough resources in there to, um, to meet our requirements and to do it because we are only going out to consultations, the other stages of it and then it, um, it's not quite done deal then, is it? So, um, it might even stretch in a bit further if we need it.
Sure, sure, appreciate that.
I produce volume costed for the, the vessel on running for calling, yeah. Um, you know, there is, it's by increasing the line for the neighborhood plan for where we're actually.
We've got the consultation plans, so that any adjustments that have been considered are included in this budget sheet. Been looking hard at the figures on my tiny computer, see, do we ever carry a contingency for a committee? Again, I mean, there are some variable things like the neighborhood plan, which we can't be accurate to.
There is faring. In the full budget for for council, there are some contingency signs. Right. General committee, they will, the lines will be set.
Sure, okay.
That's fine.
Mark, kind of. Um, what we haven't got here is the previous year's budget. Um, in the sense, is there any finance left in that budget, which when we get towards the end of the financial year, it will still be up to the March being part of the budget of this committee. This budget is, I mean, we were aware to take decisions around that at that point. Um, I just worry that it doesn't look a lot of money. Doesn't look a lot of money, but you, I'll tell you where it thought pop didn't been a whatever, yeah.
The, the line at the bottom predicts that we will be pretty much back on target for the, for this year. And it really is, I just spent, so I expect zero, so it definitely will be pretty close to the part of it.
Okay.
Can I take it that everybody is happy with that? The agreement.
Propose to agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The boss seconded.
Yeah.
Yeah, all in favour.
Yeah.
Nobody against? Hooray.
No exceptions until so far.
Thank you. As actually Dr Harrington was saying, it's passing then con. No, I want to turn up.
I just flattered you.
Oh, yes.
Dr Harrington, yeah.
I can say it too.
I don't know.
Yeah, you, yeah, okay, so item number five, the D A T L U C inquiry, uh, appendix A. Would it be sensible for me to ask Catherine just to highlight the points on, on this one? If you would, Catherine?
Yes, please. The document was far too big to summarise and it's not a questionnaire, so I can't even give you a list of the questions. I would like you all please to look at the document and give me your thoughts, which I will then collate into three thousand words as a submission. We then send that off to the department and they look at the ones that they probably consider most demeanable and then decide who to invite, who was actually going to partake of this investigation. It would be nice to think that they've got us down as small towns like us, but it would be wishful thinking, I think. But it's worth a try.
Okay. Robin.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it is an important document and, and childlike in its wording, but it's a perfectly logical document. And I'll try and put something in together and it probably would be all of three thousand words, I expect. Um, um.
I don't think English.
And what bullets wise, okay, and that might be easier for you to digest.
Several counts.
You read that on my diet, um, my entire feelings about the document, it was.
Catherine, Catherine makes a fair point, if I can just interject, uh, it would be good if several people put something forward. We have been rather remiss in the past over some of these things where uh, there's fairly slim pickings on, on comments. And I'm sure you've all got points of view, so it'd be absolutely delightful if everybody could chip in. Um, if, if I may, Robin, I'll, I'll take John and then perhaps I can come back to you. John.
Yeah, I just predicted, I mean, certainly when I was outside on Saturday morning trying to cajole people to go into the night and take part in the consultation. Um, there were several people there with their offspring, I'm, I'm guessing by the, the look of the age of them, and I wondered, I'm sure we didn't. But if there's any recollection of how many young people took part in that consultation along with their, their parents or carers. I think that'll be useful to note just from recollection and maybe with other consultation processes. Maybe we try and find a way to see when the young people are engaging with this. Because my, 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 my opening gambit, because he walked past me, usually rushing towards something like the shop or some appointment. I'd say, do you have an interest in the future of Buckingham? And they go, oh, um, no, I'm a visitor here, is quite surprising, so I welcome them to the town. But the point I'm making is, is that would be at least some data that we would have um, about in response to this. But I have to say, this is a rather weird consultation.
I've never seen one like this.
How do young children, young people experience outdoor spaces in towns? I mean, how, I mean, that is, it's like, well, how many shades of blue does the sky have? I mean, it's just, it's a kind of ridiculous question, frankly, and I, I don't know where this is coming from. I don't know if we can find out, maybe through our own team, what's been the prompt for this? Something must have tickled the government in some way, that to do something along that, what are they looking for? I don't know. I'm, I'm not suspicious, but I'm curious.
Can I just take Lisa next?
Thank you. And so my youth work on, I can answer quite a lot of this and also gather some views of young people. But so I'm loving, lucky to do that for you and, yeah, it'll be well rounded. But it points.
If I could happen soon, I can start collating common ideas and things like that because Louise has gone to the senior schools on the day the agenda goes out. Right. So I can't put it in with the agenda until I've seen what Louise has brought back. I have to circulate it by email. As, and I've put that in the agenda to say it will be circulated by email and available. But if I've got the groundwork from you people, we can add the schools in quite easily.
Yeah.
And quite a lot of you will know a small or young person. Um, I think that smaller ones are quite well catered for in playground things. But teenagers, you know, they say, for God's sake, why haven't we got a bowling room or something like that, you know?
I can tell you what they're interested in now, it's bike club, they're taking their boxing gloves and going to green spaces and let, let's let you up there.
But that second, the more, the more I get, then the, the better I can get a collective.
Yeah.
Thing and then I will present it to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
For agreement as a council, yeah. Yes, would be nice to have several.
Okay, Robin, can I invite you back in?
Yeah, yeah, just to say that John's has got this very weird word document and a weird wording way to get to. I do think the, the last part should, the growth of government, um, cross government, perhaps that's a word, it's a little, um, across government, um, 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 working, um, you know, the, the, the way they put that together, such things as public health, transport policy, net zero, and it goes into addressing children's and young people needs aspects of respect. Well, we all know what issues are in those things. And they're things that have not been addressed for, um, so long decades, really, some of those things. And, um, and I would allow them to have acted a bit more explicit about what they wanted, like John said, that, you know, because they could say, well, that's not what we wanted. Well, they don't ask the question in the way that's to be answered. Um, I mean, we all know that adult social care is likely to be issue, a big issue. And we also know public health is a big issue. We also know children education, special education, they have to wait two years for an E H C report. And so there's plenty even there, um, but it doesn't specifically say, and I worry that when we respond to it through the chair, that they'll say, that isn't what we wanted.
Public health, that must say a much for dentists or doctors or like for sexual health is.
I'm sorry, Lucy.
That's okay, I'm, we're just gonna ask for everything, is it? Do we just get one shot at this? Or are we able to, if they say, oh, no, that's usually what we want, are we able to resubmit?
I, I doubt, I doubt it, it's likely to be the latter, they, they just want us to feedback and, and that's that.
Is there a way that we'd be able to get further clarification on?
I, I, I think if, if there are problems with it, I think we would go by the empty.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'll just say John first, and then, then to you.
Just to reinforce my point, if you substitute, substitute two of the young people for adults and older people, you'll just see how ridiculous the questions are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But then councillors Harvey, Try and Co have all done surveys in the recent past where they asked some of the idiot questions and loose questions that you couldn't actually answer because you couldn't ask, well, what they were talking about.
We'll make something up.
That'll be fun, really.
No, I was just going to say, we'll make something up. Whether they're really interested in what anybody has to say or are going through a set of motions. My strong suspicion is the latter. Every single consultation, there, there are two types of consultation, as far as I can tell. One, this is the loosest thing where they can make whatever they want out of it. And the other type is where they basically tell you what the answer has to be.
Yeah.
And so that the right answer comes out at the end of it and we'll do our best.
Perhaps that's why they want an essay submission rather than tick off questions.
If you're going to go to all comments parliamentary select committee, I've attended one or two, one of those ones, um, they're much fun. Um, um, so if it does go to, we could ask the question, our response, when would you go to, would the committee go to? But we, you can actually log in and follow, with this, especially if our um, interpretation of their question is one which is taken through, it would be quite interesting to follow it through, to see how they dealt with it. And, um, and you can attend them. And, and they are public and you can sort of write in and attend them, so that's fine as well, if you like that sort of thing.
Put in your submission, Catherine.
Father, is there anybody else wishes to say? Oh.
Just to say that these sort of things, I know that the way it's written is um, a bit loose, but, um, if, if we've got something to say, this is the opportunity to do it. So it's no point in just crashing the survey, we should just get in there and if we've got some evidence, let's make, make most of the opportunity. Um, but, yeah, as you know, I used to work in the C A B, well, we have evidence. But I don't know whether we around this table have any evidence. Or are there children's groups around here that we could, I mean, youth group, Lisa does have evidence, um.
Yes.
So I, I think we should think perhaps a bit more outside our own box, think, uh, who, who in Buckingham? Children, I don't, it's not my area at all, I'm just saying that.
No, no, that's very fine. I, I was going to say in closing, when I looked, I, I saw at the beginning, says they want evidence, which to me is very much what Jane has just said. Can we have some hard evidence rather than opinions and the rest of it? Because inevitably, we're going to effectively give our opinions. We don't have access to these data, do we? In, in the way that I would talk about evidence.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lucy.
Sorry. Um, when they talk about evidence, what do we think, do they, do they want figures? Or would statements from young people on how they're experiencing open spaces? Because for me, that would be evidence because that's coming straight, yeah, what's now, so to speak. So maybe it's something we could do, I could be happy to do a bit of work maybe with.
That would be useful.
About just garnering the local feeling of what's young people, because on a personal note, we've had, um, a lot of anti-stable behaviour in my parents' backyard and whether, you know, kids just coming over and I've been sitting around garden table and I was like, what, why is that? Have you got anywhere else? They're like, what else are you supposed to do? There's no one to do that, you know, there's nowhere to go. But my dad wants us, we'll go in her local council. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I plan to move on now.
Yeah, it's fine.
Uh, to item six, was planning applications. Uh, and for members' information in the next scheduled Buckingham Council North Buckinghamshire planning area committee meetings. And then there's various dates and times, I don't.
That might be one I stopped reading on schedule.
Yes, scheduling, yes, that, 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 yes, that's good. And then that really moves us on to the, the meat of the evening, as it were, the, the applications. And I'll start with number one, which is for nursery grounds. Um, unless you want me to, I won't read out the fine detail.
No, there's no, there's a rating.
Um, I, I open for members' comments and I start with John.
I propose no objections.
And does, is there a second there? Uh, Lisa has seconded. Um, all those in favour? That's not opposed then, that goes through.
Abstention.
Oh, uh, it's, oh, I'm sorry, Andy, did you just?
No, 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 no.
I, I'm, I'm taking it as read that we just.
We just take it as read as many counts.
That's right, I think so. Yes.
Uh, I didn't vote that.
Did you? Did, did you say?
You didn't ask, you didn't ask, yeah.
I haven't had my chance yet.
Right, let me, let me just retract. Councillor Try, would you care to?
I don't think you should, uh, single me out.
I thought you'd single yourself back.
I was not to agree or disagree or abstain.
Yes, I appreciate, I appreciate. It's just that I saw a lovely forest of hands go up and I thought everybody was, uh, in favour. So my fault, you know, would be paired to.
Disagree.
Have the words, you disagree.
Yes.
Did you wish to say anything about the disagreement?
Um, I thought that although it's not in the floodplain, I would have liked some sort of, um, uh, aeration underneath it to allow a little bit more spreading of the water.
Yeah, okay, that's very nice. I, I'm, I'm told that the house is partly built on steel so that it has this facility for to, uh, deal with an ingress of floodwater. And, and perhaps we can add a note to say that we assume that the structure takes that into account. And then that would satisfy us all.
Sorry, what I don't know, I don't know.
No, I appreciate that. So is everybody happy?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't move on, let's make my just check.
Yeah, I would have, now I'm saying.
Yes.
What objection to that? No.
No.
No, we're agreeing to it.
No, I've seen the blog objection.
Yeah, you're happy with it as well, or have you objected?
No, I'm going to object that the, the council's gone forward with the majority.
Yeah, the majority, not a project, not a practice. Let's have a bracket number two. Wilder wheels. And if it is down the technical one place, see display around in the minute. That's the dry cleaners.
Yeah.
Excellent. Um, any comments on that? Uh, John?
This really kills from twenty twenty one. I can't believe another business before.
Um, I think councillor Harvey, you did make this news and that is why we raised an enforcement.
I'm right, well, I forgot, no, this is.
This, this is the result of the enforcement initiative you raised.
I'll go with these. It's been years.
Patrick did, John.
Do we have a proposer? Martin, thank you very much. Then somebody's a second.
What are we, hang on, yeah, I don't know what we're voting, retrospectively. Retrospectively, um, not object.
No, it's a doctor, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and that was Fran, that issue was seconded, Fran seconded. All those in favour of the motion? Lovely, thank you very much. Number three, that's well for Valley Road. This is a house application, oh, that's, uh, for, first of all, side extension over the garage. And it might maybe certainly, let me just flip up on my computer to get a picture, I think next door.
Next door's down the tunnel. Yeah.
There's quite a few in Valley Road, I think.
Yes, yes, it's not, it's not unknown. Does anybody have any comments on it?
No.
No, no.
No objection.
I am trying to keep a weather eye, Mark, and to, to make sure in case your hand goes up. Good, okay. Martin.
Dare we ask for insulation or something on the new bit? Or is it just because it's such a small amount, it's going to make no bit of difference at all?
Building regulations anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, I know, but we need to move forward to better insulated homes.
You're right. But, um, when, when we say insulation, you're talking in the roof?
In the walls, in the roof, you know, you name it.
Yes.
Andy. I don't think it's in our place to dictate people how to insulate, as long as they follow the building regulations. Because we are then asking to change building regulations without an act of following them.
And we wouldn't want to do that. No, I, I take your point, I take the, we need to stay within the law as it stands, but it's a good point, Martin.
It's very beneficial if they insulate it a lot, it's there, it's like.
Well, that's right.
But the, the space above the garage is already a veteran, so it will have insulation because the rest of the house will have insulation. What they're doing is instead of having the sloping ceiling that you bang your head on the minute you stand up, is making vertical walls and a slightly raised roof. And that, that noise, as I would imagine, they've built some modern buildings down.
Yeah, yeah.
Next up, John.
Obviously, we, we have no powers to require them to do anything, but we can encourage them to think about insulation and solar panel and grey water recycling when they come to do it. Because they're going to have a scaffolding in sight to do all this and therefore adding those things, you, 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 you make the most of the resources that we have. So I think if we could say what about it in our response, I mean, I think it's basically no objections to this. But we'd say we'd love to see, you know, um, some, some, some work done on those three aspects.
So it's a question of, of just adding a little note, so I had no objections call, but, um, how, can we hope that, um, um?
Yeah, we'd like them to explore the possibility of, and they, they may have already started on it. But they might, they might think, oh, yeah, they've thought about something, that's a good idea, why we got the scaffolding up, you never know.
That's right. Um, do we, um, want to add in, um, electric vehicle charging points as well, with that some?
I don't believe that consists of retrospective ones, it's only new though.
Okay, no, but I'm, I'm in with, in with it, with the suggestion of solar panels, increased insulation, um, grey water recycling, um, um, to add in.
That, that you can do while you're lifting a roof box and putting a new one back higher up. And EV charging points are a different thing.
Worth the time. It's worth the time, we can get this into people's thinking.
Yeah.
So that they just do it, you know, they go, oh, yeah, doing some building work, why don't we? That's what we're trying to do, isn't it?
It's not future, future briefing, isn't it?
Yeah.
It, it does raise a question, I mean, this has just come out of my head, that we have certain criteria we'd like to, uh, fulfil. E V, grey water, solar panels, it almost behoses to actually add that as a standard, um, uh, tag on ev- every application. Regardless of frankly how relevant it is, it becomes a standard and then that, that's a great.
Yeah, yeah, no, I thought that's.
Well.
No objection, quite often this notice is taken on the sheet.
Sure.
If members have room in the addition.
Certainly, no relation to something, just ready to see any. Right, so, we have a standard thing for if they haven't got something to notice at the end of the meeting. Does, does, yeah, to make a standard paragraph, I tap onto the bottom of the table.
Well, I was just.
They have permission to, of certain things if they do actually say that they're going to install.
Something, yes, yeah, I, I, I freely admit, it was a thought that had just occurred to me because then we, we, we were discussing which of our, our designers were relevant to tag on to this particular application and, or not. And so I thought, well, if we always include them at everything, then we're always covered, but I don't want it to become a sin. So maybe, maybe we have a little think about that and bring it up as an idea in the future. With the kicking the can down the road, the resounding clang.
Yeah.
Whether or not.
Yes.
Could we request therefore that the clerk reads a short report for the next planning meeting as to what the options might be, that we can always simply add that to any response that we give.
That sounds like a terrific idea. Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Yeah, all in favour? Is everybody angry?
No, no, I, I find it very dictating.
No, that's okay.
Yes, each decision should be a decision made in, in a meeting.
Planning.
Yes, so if you're considering a big application, you're making a decision in a meeting. Yes, if you then want to add on a set paragraph, I would probably recommend that you actually say that for each one in the meeting.
Right.
Just so that it's clear in. Unless the discussion is clear, the, the minutes are clear, yes, um, in case something appears in our side. It's, um, but it's not appeared in the meeting as a response from the committee.
Right, so we, we could say that, um, uh, you know, that's what. Right. So we, we could say that, um, uh, you know, what the, 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 uh. It's certainly no objection and, and we have put our standard um paragraph on type for each one as we go through.
Yeah, yeah. Where you don't want is, you give your answer, you've done your bones.
Yeah.
And if the wording goes in differently.
Okay, in that case, expand the minutes by a week.
But I'm just saying, well, I'll, I'll go back to my committee period, it's fine. The decision's made in the committee, yeah, so.
Lucy.
Just with bearing that in mind, would, and with John's idea, would it be prudent to, if we did go down the route of having um set um paragraphs to tag on to the end, that we could just have um maybe like an appendix at the end of the minutes? With each paragraph as like one A, one B, one C um as a standard, so then for each planning application, be like, okay, so we, we're gonna tag on paragraph one A.
Robin, you, you had your bar up.
Yes, yeah, just to make one comment, one you have to be very careful of, that, that probably you may be accused of pre-determination, because you, you, you determine part of what you're going to say before you make a decision. So when Steve's saying, um, you need to consider that on the application, he's right, because otherwise if you say we're gonna do it on everyone, you pre- partly pre-determined all your applications before you hear them, and there might be one where we get it back and that'll take ages. So I think it's um more of a case that, um we examine what, you examine what um that is, and then determine how you you would do it on an application, which on each application, this non-determination, pre-determination is pretty serious and we shouldn't be seen to be doing that or as a council.
Uh, Anya, then Lisa, then John, and then Jane.
I would reg. I'm having a feeling we are in danger of making policy on the hoof here. And I think we should probably take a back, back step from this in this meeting.
Yeah, I agree. Well, thanks, business.
Yeah.
Well, yes, I, I, I think you're in the right area now, because what we're hearing here sounds like something that should go in a planning recommendations. When people are thinking of applying for planning commission, we should be giving them a sort of feeling of we should, we should be thinking of this, we should be thinking about all these wonderful things. Um, but we're, we're this situation, we're in legal mode. And tagging things on, I think as Anya was just saying, could be dangerous, but the recommendation should be out there somewhere, when they're more in learning and learning mode.
Lucy.
Next, um, I think we just have to be very careful, and I, I say that we let him remember his report back. Um, because if planning, going back to what Steve was saying, sort of backing up what he was saying is that if planners watch our meetings and may see anything that they can disagree with and bring us to task, that we have to be very careful of that. Because they can be watching what we're saying.
Sure. John.
I think we've just voted on a motion that we'd have a report at the next meeting and resolve this. So why are we talking about it now in advance of that report? Can we please store this, these, these conclusions? The next meeting, when we have a proper discussion, which will be through the legal process, with Steve and Claire and so on. And we'll then know what we can and what we can't do vis a vis the law, otherwise we can't be speculating. Let's get on to the next one.
Okay, thank you, John. All, all I was trying to do is people seem to be interested in discussing it to some degree, and it was nice just to uh get a feeling of the meeting. So we now draw it to a close and move on to number four, which is cross street apps. Don't know if anybody wants to comment. Ah.
Wonder what we're gonna hear from the bookies.
I, I'm really just going to say, part of the comments of Roger Newell, who as most people know, was a former planning officer with A D E C. And the, um, he infected this particular end of the house uh in its pre uh pre-application stage many years ago, and said it was terrible, and he's really, really pleased to see they're doing things properly. So no objection.
Yeah, no objections.
No objection.
Uh, Mark.
Mark, do speak.
Yes, I, I'm still awake. His house, um, Mr. Byrne got in touch with Catherine and myself with some concern that he'd applied for this in September. It wasn't validated until October the thirtieth, and now tonight, November the twenty seventh, we're only just seeing this. As of Friday, I haven't had a chance to look today, there was still no response from the historic building officer. And I think we have a duty to our residents um to make sure that these planning applications go through in a timely manner. Mr. Byrne wanted to get all this work finished by Christmas, we've got absolutely no chance now. What he's, what he wants to do is obviously uh very good for the house, for the listed building, as we just heard from Carolyn. And I just think we should express our concern that when one of our uh residents makes a planning application, it should be heard in well under eight weeks. Particularly when it's a fairly minor matter, and where is the historic building officer's report?
So we have no objections. Is somebody?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. Seconded, uh Fran. All those in favour? That's everybody. Lovely. Thank you very much indeed. Number five is twelve thirteen Market Hill. It's a question of um penetration changes. Does anybody have any comments on this particular application?
Haven't we just seen something relating to this building, uh building?
I think we're on the sixth one, councillor.
Are we on the fifth one?
Steve, this is the recent planning history runs to eight.
Yes, yes. I mean, it doesn't seem uh uh something of significance on the face of it, so I would suspect that we would have no objection. And is everybody in agreement with that? And can I have a proposer for that? Mark is proposing. Oh, you do want to speak, Mark?
I can't propose because I'm, I can't have a vote at the meeting. I just remind members that we are opposing this development at the moment, so it would be a bit strange for us to approve uh so, some added plans when we're opposing it. Anyway, the, the, the whole development. Thank you.
Uh, uh, second Lucy, and then I'll go with you.
Yes, well, we did oppose the, that was our group, but this is simply, what, what it is, there was an application in twenty twenty two to mess about with the doors and windows, because quite a lot of them are barred and really look like. Um, they've got approval for that. But they now want to do it differently. It means that their approval has to be overturned with another application for what they now want to do. Um, I mean, people from my background, they've actually drawn a different flower around the ones they want to change, because that's what they were approved as, and that's what they want. Um, and it's, it's simply a technical on this. I mean, it's nothing to do with the the man's heart group, per se, it's turning over the, the windows, they felt they were too small for a room. Um, I think we can, we can bear both. We can oppose the man's heart group, which is not part of the windows on that side. Um, we can approve figure windows for people's rooms on the flats that they've already got, they've already got permission, but the existing floors into flats, and that's part of that. The new, new thing, a whole new story on the top, and some faffing around round the back. That's a different question. It's nothing to do with this application. We're dealing with applications as they are presented.
Did you catch all that, Mark? Does the make sure, I think you heard it okay?
Thank you.
So, the proposal, no objection.
Mark, could you mute yourself, please?
Yeah.
Well done, well done. So would somebody like to propose no objection? Thank you, Fran. Second, uh, thank you. Right, no problem. All the others in favour? That's everybody, it's lovely. Now going to move on to the four London Road. Which is converting from a dwelling house to a seven person HMO. And apparently, from what I understand from today's technical briefing, this is really a, a change in what they've already applied for, and, and consequently, um. I would, I would have thought that it needs a new application, but I, I'm not.
Yes, the amended plans arrived in this morning, suppose.
Yeah, so what we've got here is not the current plans, the new plans arrived today.
Essentially, what they want to do is not put somebody down the bottom of the garden in the garage.
Right.
They want to build an upstairs extension instead and put it in there.
Yeah.
Um, and it's obviously the office's decision that it isn't a new application, it's just a wuss on the other one, but I haven't obviously had time to brief you on it. Um, so there is a reconsortation, formal reconsortation, um with a new date, so we can do it at the next meeting. Unless there's anything you particularly objected to in what I wrote already. Um, I think we could defer it if members were agreed or add anything that we thought was wrong, that they could amend again by the time we, you know, before we actually get to the next meeting.
I've watched it twice.
Yeah.
That there might, might have been something that struck you as inequitous, and, you know, could they do something about this as well then? Um, so if there's anybody around the table who thinks that was down, we can put that in a response and say we will differ until we've got the the rest of the stuff in.
Lucy, how did your hand go?
Um, it was more just, I don't, again, I'm sorry if this is like I don't really know about the ins and outs of properly phrased expressions and stuff, but my concern is just about it being turned into um student accommodation and that we learn lessons from odd fellows hall. I don't know if the application has been landed into student accommodation has already been approved, but where I suppose it was the initial application was for student accommodation, has now become something else.
Yes.
Um, and also whether if it were to become student accommodation, what the um measures in place around antisocial behaviour would be, um. If you've got seven students all living in a house on a very busy um street, you know, you've got a lot of family houses around. Um, and just, I don't know.
No, no, these, these are good, these are good points, how the, they're not planning points as such. And, and there's no disrespect intended to you on that. We have to a fairly narrow um point. We, we can't deny this on planning, uh if there are no planning objections, we can't, so, um. Lisa.
Thank you. Um, I really don't like the fact that they are still calling these student accommodations, because they, there, there are a lot of single people, that are not students, that are finding it a struggle to find somewhere cheap enough to live. That they're on a low income and just kind of getting by, but we keep seeing these HMOs for student accommodation. And it just annoys the heck out of me. It's not a reason.
No, no.
But, but it just having that in these applications, when there are lots of single people that need to find somewhere to live, and it just irks me massively.
Well, it irks us all, I think, Lisa, so you're not alone. Um, Fran?
Um, possibly one reason why they are describing it as a student accommodation is there's no council tax to be paid um on student accommodation.
Don't have to provide product on.
Yeah.
Because they say people who live in HMOs have less use than anybody else, and they're thinking, no, I'm sorry, if you've got a job in London, please. You are probably going to try.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I'm on that point as well, HMOs, as, as Lisa says. Um, it's unfortunately the case that accommodation is so expensive that people do end up living in HMOs, um. I think realistically, we need to be looking, as I've said before, in, in this, in this committee. Um, we need, we need proper single person accommodation and not people living in house shares. Um, which is basically what, what it is. Um, it's not good for people's mental health, it's not good for people's um physical health. Um, and it's not, not suitable um for people. People need a home, but not just, not just a bed set.
That's actually Carol is.
I was just going to ask, a very notice had been put up, because I think in cases like this, it's very important, you know, what the names think. And I don't know.
There is no sign notice yet.
And, well, we've just to make sure that by the time these deferred lines are, yeah, come up.
From number four down. I really don't know what they're doing down there. They seem to be for, certainly for listed buildings and other statutory ones, like ones in public rights where things, they are relying on the ad that they put in the back of the advertisement, which is really useful. Especially if you've got some very large, like we find, right?
So we move on, Sherman, who gets the next one?
Well, I don't, I think Robbie wishes to speak.
Yeah, just listening to, I'm not commenting on the application, just, there's two things in play here. HMOs are a licensing application, not a planning application, and the application is a, is a planning application. Through you, Chair, it might be worth just, from the offices of the town council, thinking and understanding of how much the two departments, planning and devising are working together on this, because there's been some disquiet made about the, around the council tax issue, around the parking issue, and the way they determine an application. For an HMO, just to seek assurance that they are working together when it comes to determine these things. Because one would be determined, because this council, for reference to the accounts of this council who actually brought up that we have, um, wanted something to do, one article for, but we've got HMOs licensing. And it was this council that raised it, which we had a vote. So I think we do have a store in it. Um, I think we just need to verify whether the two departments are talking to each other, because it, listening to what's said in here makes a lot of difference to the planning application and licensing. They're not in, they're not operating together, then we're gonna get really bad decisions.
What, what I suggest, that the proposal should be, for the, for the London Road, is that we defer until we have seen um the, the new plans properly present. So Fran, you, you proposed that?
I, I thought you proposed that, and I'm.
I, I was to avoid the chair proposing anything.
Okay.
Mark does. So Fran.
I propose what you said.
All those in favour? Thank you very much.
That's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, yeah, moving on. Uh, the next one is forty three Tree Fields. It's a replacement of a conserv.
No objection.
No objections.
No objection, yeah. All those in favour of no objection? Um, who proposed that? Can I say you, John?
John, it's not a particularly good look, your hand there.
Number eight and number nine are former Little, uh Little Shek. Which is now they're proposing the Simon Stein side. Which is now they're proposing the sign of Stein, side piece for Starbucks, yeah. Um. Is anybody any comments on, on that particular one? Martin.
Now that it's being used for something after such a long time, um, it was, I remember working in Travelodge back in, back in the days for about seven years. And, um, yeah, I'm, I'm thoroughly glad that someone has taken up the ownership of that and now using it into a usable facility, so well done.
Just wish it was Casey.
Oh, true. Now, Casey Gravy. Ju- just to be, be clear, the, the planning permission for for the building has already gone through. And this is, this is, as is normal on these sorts of things, like it was with McDonald's.
Yeah.
This is for the signage. And that's great detail. Um, but you're obviously proposing no objection?
I'll propose no objection.
Second, Lucy will second it. And all those in favour, two, three, thank you very much. Yes, thank you, Martin. I thought I had a couple of shirts leading right.
You were.
So Seventh West Street, um. This did feel the archipelago of non-structural wall on the ground door, learning of several walls on the new retrospective. Um, any comments upon this one?
Yeah.
Yes. John, thank, I think what we're lacking again is the historical officer's perspective. Absolutely, yeah. You know, how can we, how can we, I mean, the insight was great, but how can we judge this, you know, it's a listed building, this is outside of our expertise.
Yeah.
Assets, and we need, need professionals to be on this.
Dave.
Where is it? Is there someone posted like you?
Fran?
It does say the official listing includes none of the interior features, so. Um. But it also says interior not inspected, so.
Yeah, they, the, I think they, what has happened is gentleman has just settled premises. And the solicitor has picked up that he hasn't got planning permission to do this work. So he's currently trying to put planning permission in place so that, so it can go through. Uh, what he has actually done is removed structural walls and widened a doorway. So, but he hasn't got photographs of what it looked like before that, so a reinstatement is going to be a bit of a problem. I mean, I have to say, personally speaking, that it makes us a few remove it. And he has used substantial oak pillar to, to replace it, the wall is demolished. And I would find it not in me to criticise him on that. Simply maintain two small dark cuttings because the, the other back one placed north into a yard, so, you know. His sitting room is probably good because it's roughly sat. But, um.
Does look nice.
Yeah. If, if you go on to white room, then look at the sale. It's about forty pictures of various parts of that, it was absent with the watch.
And you can shake your hand up.
Yeah.
Lovely, go for it.
I was just going to say that old buildings also still need to remain livable, so, uh, I, on those grounds, you know, I said like, well, you really ought to have asked for permission first, but still I wouldn't find it in me to say no.
John, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, there may be evidence from a previous sale, because often the listings from a previous sale will be up there. Um, this is one that's going to be looked at by a historical buildings officer to judge whether, um, it requires, you know, restoration or for those acceptable, I mean, I, I wouldn't ask comment on that. All I know is when I owned this building, we had to get, like, we should just put a few extra bricks in the chimney to repair it, um, you know, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. Pedding tree rules, okay, yes. Martin?
As you know, I'm not in favour of retrospectives, one iota. Um, but remember, our premise of retrospective is would we have approved it in the first place? So we've got to look at this application in that way.
Yes, agree, agree. I mean, I, I would suggest that, um, uh, as this is really as much down to the historical buildings officers, aim properly. Um, from our, if you like, our very narrow point of view. Um, then I would suggest no objection if somebody would care to propose that. Which Ryan does, thank you, Ryan, because then it's down to the historical buildings officer to say yea or nay with his expertise.
So I think, like you put it, there's no objections, subject to the satisfaction.
That's good, definitely.
Seconda? Thank you, Fran. All those in favour? Hooray, thank you, everybody. Okay, number eleven, Price Hospital Harms Houses. Now balcony removal works, I know I've also, um, because, um.
No objection.
I can't, I can't see any reason to not, um. Yeah, no objection.
No objection.
Lovely, so the proposal is no objection, uh, a seconda? Thank you, Andy, all those in favour? Anybody again?
Can I just double check, because I was looking up my, did the proposed, uh, second have not got any declarations, have they?
No.
For this one?
No, that's right.
Okay, and only those in favour?
But when, so, and those in favour? It was, John, do you have?
I'm abstaining, because I've got.
Was he a rusty?
Yeah. Oh, I see, I apologize. And you, I'm sorry, I'm so interested, I'll run your handwriting.
Just a point of order, Jay, you shouldn't be chairing this discussion, because you have an interest.
Well, I, I, I said I'll full side, but I think it's a call for if somebody is happy to propose it, I was, I was hardly thinking that was prejudicial, but I'll take advice. Is that?
As long as you don't have any comments.
I'd be very careful. All right. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, I was very careful.
Yeah, for you, okay.
Thank you.
I think.
You want to do the hands up, those abstainers, Steve?
Yes, hands up for those abstainers, yes, thank you, that's two, three. There's three, three extensions. Okay. Very much, so we're on to, ooh, let's see, number twelve, fifty four Oakden Crescent. And this is a request for a certificate of lawfulness for a proposed drop curb. And Mark, you have your turn now.
Thank you, Chairman, um, I'm going to suggest to members that they oppose this on the following grounds. Um, that this parking area has been built over a garden, a sloping garden. It has no drainage, it, it's not big enough to accommodate Buckinghamshire Council's minimum parking standards, which for parallel parking are six metres long by three metres wide. I went up there on Friday, had a look at the site, it is not even five metres deep. This, let alone six, which means if they buy a new Range Rover, which is five point two five metres long, it will be almost over the curb, which they want to drop. Uh, nobody will be able to get by. Um, there is no drainage grill, which we normally request, and any water that, uh, collects there is going to flood back into the road, it won't be soaked up into the garden as it was in the previous years, you can see that from Catherine's photographs, so I would suggest, urge members indeed to oppose this on, on those facts, that it doesn't meet uh, minimum highway standards and there is a, a hard risk to neighbouring properties. Thank you.
Martin, may I say that, uh, Mark took the words right out of my mouth, especially about the, uh, the drainage there. Um, yeah, I mean, it looks nice, but uh, it doesn't meet certain basic conditions, I would have thought.
Yeah.
Is a point of order, because Mark's not in the room, does someone else propose that?
Oh, yes, I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, perhaps Martin would like.
So, yes, I'll carry on with my comments and say, yes, I, I would like, uh, I, I propose that we oppose this on drainage and size grounds.
Yeah.
A little moment, yeah.
I'll say that.
And, and Lisa, Lisa has seconded it, all those in favour of opposition? Excellent, thank you, that is everybody.
May I make one more comment?
Please, you're welcome.
As a side comment. I don't know whether, because of where it is against the house, whether there should be some higher wall or railings, you know, because it's, it's a big drop the other side.
Yeah, I see it.
Easy done. Um, just a point of order, it does say not for cost of station.
Let's never stop this council.
Yeah.
I think you'll find, Fran, this is the Nelson we see.
Okay.
Okay, that's lovely, that's a one. Um, the next one, number thirteen, ten Tocky Road has been withdrawn. So I'm going to need to. And then, not in our parish, but following the Nelson principle again, uh, to a degree, to a degree. Uh, number fourteen, this by Telegraph's, uh, application for the erection of what this, they call it warehouse use with associated car parking. I would suggest that it's not of official interest to us, but made more parry, except that it does impinge on us in terms of traffic, traffic management. And, and bearing in mind, we've already got, well, one hundred and six, uh, uh, one hundred and sixty three houses or whatever it is. We're really just adding insult to injury in terms of traffic. And I would suggest that it might be proper to, to confine ourselves to that, but Mark has his hand up, so he gets first tips.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, this application is for more offices and warehousing at the Telegraph. It's going to add fifty employees to the hundred and seven who are already there. Um, obviously what's happened is that the Telegraph, which owns the land um, off Walnut Drive, uh, will be using some of that money to expand the business. Um, Walnut Drive, one hundred and sixty three houses already approved. Morton Road three, a hundred and thirty houses, subject, as you know, to planning inquiry at the moment. But if that is approved, we're talking about three hundred more houses in this little quarter of Maidsmorton and Buckingham. And that is going to hugely affect our traffic. They've done traffic assessments, capacity assessments at the junctions, but of course, that's been done before any of these three hundred houses been built. Uh, they reckon there'll be forty more trips in the morning peak hour and thirty three more trips in the afternoon peak hour, and that is along Walnut Drive. Which is going to have to share with the housing traffic, they're going to have to share with heavy goods vehicles, because warehousing attracts HGVs. Uh, HGVs are going to have to negotiate the mini roundabout outside the pub there. Um. Traffic plan is all over the place, um, they're talking about pedestrian catchment area of Dugong Spine. But a cycle catchment area of five kilometres, there is no cycleway up here, that means Maidsmorton, um, is going to be, it, it, you've got buses. At, and Catherine will tell you that the bus service suggests is virtually non-existent, the bus stop is nearly half a kilometre from this site. And the travel plan is a hundred and thirty eight pages, most of it is nonsense and none of it refers to the Buckingham neighbourhood plan despite us being the neighbouring parish. So again, I would urge members on the grounds of this um, to oppose this on the extra traffic that would be generated onto the A four one three, which will overload the Old Jail roundabout, uh, if traffic goes that way or it has to go the other way through, eight, through to and from Akeley, which has a pinch point. The only positive I can see about all this is more employment, uh, but there is there is industrial states in Buckingham where this warehouse could be built and, um, I think for those reasons, I urge members to oppose this, thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and, um, Carolyn?
Well, at the Maidsmorton council, I can assure you that, that we are opposing this in exactly the sort of terms that Mark has just outlined, and so I will repeat them. And, but we, obviously, Maidsmorton Parish Council would be very grateful for town councillors' support on that opposition.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else wish to, uh, John?
I'm sure this probably isn't a planning consideration, but it feels to me as if they've outgrown that site and they need to rethink. Completely.
That's, uh, that could certainly be the case, you know, it must be. So the proposal, uh, Fran?
Um, just a thought, really, that if they were to, as Jane says, they've outgrown the site. If they were to remove from that site and move, say, to the Buckingham industrial estate, that would be another Branfield site set for white housing again, wouldn't it?
That, that is, that is.
We have to be careful what we wish for, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Lucy?
It was just, again, I don't know if this is possible in any way.
You know.
Would it be possible to, I mean, it wouldn't really help that much, but I was just thinking if they were advised to put in another accessory. Um. Potentially along to the Foscat Road, but then that's going to have loads of HGVs coming to a really dangerous junction there as well, so I'm regretting my statement.
Never, never regret what you've, what you've said.
I think, I think the, the, the road situation has to remain in terms of physicality, pretty much as it is now. And, and we need to be strong in our resolve to ensure it doesn't get ever more traffic on that. Um, because geography sort of has a way of sort of making you stay where you are in, in those terms, but, uh, hang on.
Since we have, um, I think Mark has summarised it quite nicely, I'm not going to repeat it, we also have heard what the views of Maidsmorton Parish Council on this, on the grounds of this, I would propose that we oppose this.
Thank you very much, uh, seconda? Fran? And all those in favour of proposing it? Thank you very much indeed, that's everybody. That's good. It is, it is a note that I made during the technical briefing, that the the traffic management plan is, is years old, it's been used to define this, it doesn't, obviously, it doesn't take account of a sort of contemporary situation. Right, so we're now moving, well, we're moving on to likely fifteen, which is Fenty Wagman's Garden, which is the, the, uh, training, um, hedge. But that has already been, uh, we've been, it was circulated by email in a normal way. But I, I mentioned that really. Oh, Mark has drawn your attention to us.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for that, um, if I could just apologize to members, but I was at Stoke Mandeville Hospital at eight o'clock this morning and I am wilting, so with your permission, I will leave the meeting at this point.
Yeah. Thank you, Mark. So that was Mark about nineteen minutes to go in. Yeah, lovely. So seven, uh, seven point one, planning decisions to receive information details of planning decisions made by Buckinghamshire Council, which um, approved, refused and, and, uh, not for consultation approved. Um, if anybody would like to go through any of these, but I mean, I'm assuming that everybody's seen those that we were against, asked, and those we were in favour of, not in fast and slow. Um.
Yeah, disappointing.
I, I think it, I may be wrong about this, but, uh, I, I, I would prefer not to, to comment on any of the things, saying, cool, I wish they'd done this, I wish they'd done that. So it's a decision made and.
That's no good whatsoever.
I'm trying, I'm trying to sort of follow the rules here, yeah.
I will point out, that's not a typo in the first application number, it really is two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, I, I, in the excitement, um, Catherine did point this out earlier, application to the top nineteen slash, uh, double O nine O two. That's two thousand and nineteen, I mean, we're just.
The early part, sorry, at least.
Yeah, and we're on the cusp of two thousand and twenty four, Martin?
Is there anything outside of this meeting offline that we can use to train ourselves about the differences as to why?
Why what?
Why, why the differences, why we thought one, um, and somebody else thought. Why, why the differences, why we thought one and and somebody else thought something else? You know, so that we can maybe align ourselves or learn.
Responses from the officers that may be available on the site, so.
Well, their report to their team leader is on the site. We used to, as a courtesy, every time that we got a decision that was different from what was what we said, we used to get a letter from Mr. Byrne to say why because they don't seem to do that.
It's a, it's a, it's a good, good point, but again, I suppose when you get a group of human beings thinking about something and then another group of humans, there's going to be differences. Yeah. Because they're looking at it from different angles and so on and so forth, but nevertheless, it's it's fair comment. John?
Well, we we read the one about the 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 President meeting board. You know, that was certainly because it was all on email. Um and the reasons there were clearly clear from the officers on why they did actually approve the work. Um and I think they they had more information than we had.
Yep.
About the actual quality, shouldn't say, um of the uh of the safety plan itself. Um because we were we were being informed in a sense partly from our own limited knowledge about how these things work. So I think on each of these, there would be clear reasons as to why.
Yeah.
I mean, who knows, if I think I hit right, generally is improving from what it was a few years ago. This is rather put out on it, um at the end of the year, it's a shame, but I think there are probably good reasons. Um there would have been good reasons for it. Now equally, the ones that refuse that we thought, oh, griefer, it's the back of a garden, what does it matter? They clearly tell it needs to be to be approved, so um sometimes it just doesn't make sense. The old fellow's hall, I think, is a is a worrying thing altogether though, to be honest, because that seems to be a big mess.
Okay, I propose to move on to seven point, oh, did you, sorry.
Oh, no, I was saying, no.
Oh, second.
No, okay. Um seven point two, the planning inspector, uh land of uh Foundry Drive. But that was refused and that that was the the appeal. Um and we certainly were with that one, for sure. And Robin has his hand up, so I shall ask.
Spoke with the officer and um on that in great length and she was very much supporting the town council's view that it hadn't actually been advertised for um industrial and there was no demonstration that they tried to even market it for industrial, so it didn't fit in with their policies. Plus, they haven't actually the moment instances how they were gonna relate it to the upper state and I think she um policies of the local authority were strong enough to, um anyway, of course, with planning application, that one is forever, so be minded. If they can demonstrate that they've advertised this time, whatever it may come back, but then that would be an application that would have to determine um if it was to come back, but I think she did a good job in that, really. Um and different processes, but um we have had applications of this developer before and I'm pretty sure um would think of that.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And again, certainly run Highlands Road, um the appeals with you. So we move on to item eight, which is a response to a written question by by Council Stutchbury um uh to councillor Boardman concerning drainage and flooding. We are asked to receive the information and uh I'd be interested in hearing anybody's points of view on that. Lisa?
Um can we just recall our thanks yet again to Robin for asking questions that um we often think of here, but we channeled through Robbins, so can we minute our thanks?
Thanks for that, just that the agenda items were different this time. I will mention two things which maybe need to be minded about. This agenda usually takes reports from Buckinghamshire, now it's not on the agenda, this item, this report's come after, so the agenda's different this time.
That is because ones that follow other meetings, Robin, are now their own agendas.
We do, Robin.
We do.
All right, okay, we're just, I'm I'm just to inform you that you might wish to watch the broken infrastructure committee before you meet your your next meeting. And the questions that you put in this council, you should be getting written responses to those.
Yeah.
If you've had time, please watch the broken infrastructure committee. Um and the deliberation of the question and public questions, I think you'll find that quite interesting. And you may want to pay attention to the um the um the council's policy on social housing strategy, maybe to look at that if you have a chance individually to respond to it.
I think it's slightly informal, but um I know Robin puts up something on Facebook for all the times he's asked questions and they're invariably relevant to us. And so he does give us a heads up for something to be looked at, so I I thank him for that as well.
Yeah.
There are things that you need to know. I I know Catherine watched for me. I could bring something quite disturbing to you at the next meeting, I'm sure you'll.
Next meeting also follows the council, so we have all sorts of.
I I will, of course, think.
By which time I may have come.
Um well, may have come, they might have. Um um but we can, you know, fair balance meetings, we'll know. Um but yeah, uh but.
So I I'd like now, unless there's anybody else wishing to comment and Lucy, don't.
I was just gonna ask a question, I'm sure Robin might know the answer. Um in regards to the um the inspections of the highways. Um I was wondering if you knew whether London Road fell under three B or four A? Which would depend, so if it falls under inspection class three B, then highways need to be inspecting it on a monthly basis. And I would have thought that, oh, sorry, is this completely irrelevant?
I'm feeling we are.
The question was asked, I could even not answer it or we could. Or we're not, well, I can answer it, but you raised a very relevant point. Um and to be strictly honest, the way they categorise inspections, that is pretty difficult to work out. Um all orders are raised against the works needed to be carried out. This, how that works carried out and when it's carried out seems to be completely um irrelevant. But the points we were concerned about as a community was um local councils, was the points of children walking to school, what you're making. We've got three areas in Buckingham where both, all of them could just be changed and children getting flattered vehicles on the way to school. Really, you can just, um really, everyone, that's why I went, and and the answer which nobody spotted in the written response, the answer, never actually answered the question.
Yeah.
He actually gave us loads of facts and figures about what he'd spent, but didn't actually answer the question that what he was, what was he gonna do about the walking to children, which is really, thank you for bottoming that. Um he didn't actually answer it, which is, which is shocking really, isn't it? But I said to him, I'll be back.
I mean, strictly, I suspect this this annual is sort of indicating that this strains a bit from pure planning. Nevertheless, Robin has asked the question on that behalf.
It's on the agenda.
And it's on the agenda and it and it is worth just at least briefly looking at anything that people have noticed from it and want to comment.
By the time you see the question, Daniel, it's back.
Yeah, so we move on to, we move on to item nine, matters to report. Any damage to purpose and redundant signage, access issues or any other urgent matter? And I would thank John if I may.
Yeah, two things, right, the the oncoming winter, the snow is starting, the it's beginning to get very cold and very icy. Um there's still a major problem with the uh um the the footpaths in the town centre. My ears told us people tripping over and falling very, very often. And I would like, I would begin first that we as a council, right at the Shire House, and say, what are you doing about this? There's a lot of, you know, a lot of painting staffs that are not secure, not safe when people fall over. Um that was my first point. And the second point, and we bring this up on a regular basis, and I think we have asked a question of their reply. When on earth are they gonna put the Tindric Road on the British Route? Because it's now got way more housing on that road, and that's been, um it's got a nursery on that road. People are crossing the road because they have to cross the road if they live on the new estate. And it's a forty mile um speed limit, although I always try to sturdy down the road. Um I just think we should be biddy again for that road to be on the British Route. It's it's sad and tragic and at some point someone's gonna be seriously, seriously injured, that's why I'm kind of splitting out of control on that. Well, I'll be right again about that to the Shire Council.
Brian, Robin and then Lucy.
Jonathan.
But then I apologize. I can see you behind your bottle, sorry.
That's hardly a bottle, that's more like an entire um flask.
Oh, it's good. All right, um I don't know whether or not this is an access issue. But today um I spotted that there was works going on at the A four two one towards Beechhut. Um I don't know whether or not they've stopped, but is there any, I saw them on this morning, is there any update?
Nice to know they're doing so.
Yeah.
Perhaps we can tell you next week.
So I had a message from my resident, um who notified me that lounges had put in um an application for street furniture outside uh lounges. And Catherine very kindly went and had a look and um I can leave it to Catherine, that's okay, to explain the details of it, but they've basically, it's already been agreed, we didn't get to discuss it here. Um but the lounges have, it's gone through that they can have tables and chairs outside. So I don't, do you wanna give some more dates and?
They actually applied in August before they were even open. Um seven days is all you have to display a street furniture licence for. I couldn't see it, nobody else let me know, but they've seen it. Um I went in and spoke to the manager. Lost thoughts, he notices, been removed clearly. Um and they were granted a licence in October, he showed me the licence on his phone. Um it's not on the county website, which is supposed to be public access of all licences applied for. Um so I notified licensing and they admitted that uh due to an admin glitch, it hadn't been displayed.
Which tells you can't be bothered.
Yeah, but the gentleman is in a case in a quandary because the licence only extends to and within an hour when they close, so they've got a whole hour where they can't take the tables in because they've still got people inside. He doesn't know where he's going to pull them yet, so he hasn't implemented it. But if while I was looking, and you know, you've got to search these things, I noticed that Costa, just two doors down, had renewed their licence. But it had been renewed for every day. Now, their original licence, excluding market days, bank holidays. But apparently for the past three years, it's just been renewed basically on the nod, um but as an everyday licence. And um we fought and fought to get a table licence at Costa. Um and coffee number one was the same, we had a lot of trouble with that because they denied the weapon they paid.
Right.
Um but we're not consulted on licensing applications and there is no time if they're only going to advertise it for seven days. In the chances of us actually having a meeting within that seven day period is a bit thin. But I mean, the guy at Tyler Jones, he says, people are coming outside to smoke. Which is not good if you've gone foodstall.
Yeah.
So can I say thank you to Catherine for really digging into that?
Yeah, absolutely.
It was only from my resident who notified anyway, but I do really appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, so thanks to Catherine.
Lucy, I think you had your hand up.
Um it's just, again, this might not be, but the entrance to Runbold's Fields, the new estate, is really dangerous because of the lack of visibility, if you're trying to turn left. Um there's you, you can't see anything and I think within probably about a year or two of people moving in, there were already that tyre mark on the road where people have skidded to a stop, where all your people pulling out, where there's been no visibility. Um part of it is due on the, on the left-hand side, as it's marked the estate, it's sort of like a big brick-built sign. Which will last a huge amount of your view, um and it's only a matter of time. Obviously, more and more people are moving there, traffic's gonna increase, especially as the weather's getting worse, especially if Tindric Road is being gritted. There's gonna be a nasty accident. There's already been a couple of accidents down that road and.
So this is certainly left out towards the the right of our two one, yeah, so we're we're clear about that.
Yeah.
Maybe this is something we could write. Yeah, absolutely, yeah, well spotted, and suggesting things are on the agenda, so we come out to that for a Sunday reception. Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. That that's good, good point, good point. Anybody, ah, Robin?
Thank you. Um can I ask John's point, the, the good point, I mean, like all of this, been on about the can you raise Sultan Ruth for a long time? I did ask that council um one meeting or another some time back, will they be assessing it? And the and the answer came back, when there's a material change on a road which is a substantive change, they automatically have to be reassessed, the Sultan. Of course, they've done the Sultan route for this year, I expect, John, and again, it will not have been on it. But there is been a substantive change, they've changed the speed limit on the road from from um from fifty to forty, which is a substantial change. There's also, which is a substantive change, is the fact that there is now, as Lucy's brought up, the um there's a change in the use of the road, so you've got an extra zone on there before, which is a substantive change, that's two substantive changes. And also, there's um traffic islands in the road, which there wasn't before. And there's more people, so I think that taking Steve's point, which is better to bring it back and do a proper copper bottom job on it, doesn't stop any of us questioning. I have questioned the um two seven eight, on which two seven eight is other roadworks, for those who don't know, um and when they're getting completion, so the two seven eight works on that road, which is the areas which the developer funds. The section between, it seems most odd to us all, doesn't it, that they've done a section at the top, done a section at the bottom, done a roundabout in the gap in the middle. Those two seven eights will be completed in the coming um months, because it's something to do with the construction of the two estates. Um so that that bit of tarmac will be finished, and the answer what I got was because I was not wishing to keep raising um pot-hole repairs on it and spending resources on it if they were gonna come along and actually finally fill that gap in the tarmac, which will make it better. Usually, before road becomes adopted, the council, they have to then go through um a process of safety report and the road has to be reevaluated, which is why John's mentioning it now, actually, I think we include that into the um when they do the safety report on the road, then it has to go for a period of functioning before the actual council will adopt the two seven eight works from them, or that all that period of time the road responsibility belongs with the developer and they can have this time to adjust and do things. We know that when we all worked on the Tesco's roundabout, it started, uh it was which we spent a a lifetime on a roundabout. Um um so so there is spelt for us to do it, so both Lucy, John Wright and uh but it's how we do it and where we do it, and I think I'll talk to Steve a bit more about that. And so we bring back something, so that the decisions we take are conspicuous and 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 distinct and whatever. Uh but John, to his credit and other members, and the Sultan Vicent, that's something that we've been asking for for years. And and we did have a lorry tip over into um Westfield once, didn't we, John?
We did.
Um on that piece there, tipped down the bank there, and they still didn't, and that was a change. And when we um, we all met the gentleman about the thirty, which Margaret's not here, but she was mayor at the time, and we all met them to discuss having a thirty mile an hour limit on there and we we lost that one and ended it before, we said, um and I spoke very sweetly to the um um police officer at the time, well, it wasn't very sweet, yeah, did it?
So it's not you.
Yeah, uh but um I said, asking quite what his thoughts were, and but um but no, it is a thing and we will win in the end, and and the bits that came up, which again, you may argue at some point, loses the lighting. And which I think would be. um, which I think would be worth going back, not tonight, but it's planned tomorrow, remember the lighting there? Something that you'll get after the counter, we need to have you have the information to be able to answer that question.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, nobody, nobody else? Oh, Fran, yes?
I just, just wondered if, um, Catherine had got any, any further news regarding the, um, billiards?
No.
Um, town hall, um, lightly?
No, except that, the gentleman who runs it emailed Mark today. Um, um, saying basically that they need your back lighting and the little, um, fancy glossy things over the windows and all the rest of it, because it's, they're, they're getting more business. And I'm thinking, hang on a minute, it's probably not your lighting.
No.
It's probably because business is generally picking up after a rather dumb period. Um, he.
It's Christmas. Is it?
I think it's my opinion, it's Christmas trees, but that lighting, and it's not just the letters, it's the uplighters as well.
Yeah.
Um.
And, and, and his little canopies.
And his little canopies, which must be attached to the building and it's a grade two star listed building. You can't go boring holes in it regardless. Um, and anyway, obviously enforcement must have got in touch with him.
Right.
And that's why he's gone to Mark, who had addressed his chair of the neighbour's planning room. And I thought he must have been there, maybe he's there on the planning. Um, but Mark has replied with some clear symbolism. Um, he wanted what he was going to put past the road. Um, and if there is going to be a retrospective application for that, then we can't comment further on it.
Fair enough.
Well, he, he didn't say there was, he was thinking about retrospective application. He seemed to think that, you know, he can just do the same all day. I mean, he said, he said he got planning permission, which was a long grant.
Perhaps you've got a disability license where.
Yes, yes, I know.
If you, if you had a planning application in two thousand and fifteen that was refused and you didn't plead it, then to say that you've got planning application in two thousand or twenty two, so.
I think we, I think it, it's fair to say this is ongoing and, and perhaps.
Just one, just one's only on today.
Yes, I sus- suspect that the emails you are, was treated by, or back to the same.
And it's just that, um, we are not officers of the council, it's very, and, and, and it's very difficult. And, and this, this is the right to discuss, but I think it should be automatically said. You've said, because you can get yourself in all sorts of, yeah, you know, you can get yourself in all sorts. Because they, they think that it's, um, some sort of whatever. And, and yeah, I'd just be optimistic if after all this stuff, they actually have a disability lived in there. Um.
Yeah, it would require substantial.
I thought, I bet we'd all be really geniatic about that.
Let's try that one.
Let's, let's move on. As, as those are ideas, excellent, well, the agenda, yes. Smoothly move on to chairman's item through information, which is, you know, is big fat zero. Yeah, and then the date of the next meeting is May the eighteenth of December, following a meeting of the full council. I thank you all for your indulgence.
Thank you.
I hear that. Thank you for your.
Well, you know, get up.